Дорогие коллеги, добрый вечер. Можете меня слышать?
Здравствуйте.
Позвольте мне присоединиться. Я хотел бы сказать, что в прошлом году, по причинам, которые для вас все еще известны, традиционная встреча boards of trustees of the Russian Geographic Society не состоялась. И, к сожалению, пандемия и ограничительные и санитарные measures, которые мы должны 采取, были необходимы. Все это совпало с 175-м anniversary of the society, который состоялся в 2020. Но я хотел бы сказать, что даже с недорогим программой, которую мы провели в этом landmark year, society tried to do its best to carry on with its work and it continued its activities. Мembres of the society have been participating in volunteer movement and mutual aid events. Right now, when we're all coming up against a common threat and during these difficult times, the society still serves as an incarnation of ideas and values, it's carrying out its plans. You decided not to postpone your expeditions and field research, you continued with publishing books, making new movies and information awareness projects, very interesting ones, and some of them, the society has broadcast online. Another congress of the society took place online and its participants discussed and took all the necessary decisions to ensure its subsequent development. In particular, a decision was made on the leadership for the next five years. And I would like to congratulate all of my colleagues that have garnered the support of the congress. And I think I would like to congratulate you, Minister Shoigu, on the occasion of your reelection as the president of the organization. I would like to wish every success to the society. The society has the necessary resources to carry out its ambitious plans. There are tens of thousands of well-educated, enthusiastic researchers, explorers and scientists, and the society enjoys great authority, great respect, both in Russia and across the world. And we see very good, solid support coming, both the boards of trustees and the media council. And colleagues, I would like to take note of the great sympathy and attention you give to the society. You are constantly participating in its life. And we see a great number of great scientific achievements, captivating initiatives that have been implemented recently, and it is thanks to your support that they have come to life. And your assistance is very sincere, it comes from the heart, and it also is based on the understanding of how important the society is, not just to our country but to Russian society as a whole. And I think it's very good that the society is going to continue to organize off-site events and festivals. These events are always very interesting, very informative, and I think our today's agenda is gonna be very good, very wide. Two colleagues are going to tell us about environmental and research programs, they're going to present new projects to us, and I'm confident that the reports on these projects will make it to the pages of one of Russia's oldest magazines around the world. This year, it celebrates its 160th anniversary, and on that occasion, I would like to congratulate both the team of the magazine and its dedicated readership. Well, and there is a person on the board of trustees who, of course, is not 160 years old, but still is celebrating his birthday today, it's Mr. Wechselberg. So my congratulations to you, sir. Happy birthday. You know, pre-COVID, we had a very good practice. We used to meet during the vacations usually and summer, and the sidelines of events organized under your aegis, under the aegis of the society. But of course, during the pandemic, it was nigh impossible. But I'm hopeful that the pandemic is going to recede and retreat, to a large extent due to the active vaccination campaign we are carrying out in our country. And just before coming to you, I got my second job of a vaccine, so I'm hopeful that everything is going to be great. I'm confident, and I wish the same to you, because I know that you care for yourself and for your family, and I hope that you will follow my example. And right now, Minister Shoigu, the floor goes to you. Let's begin our work. Спасибо, уважаемый Владимир Владимирович! Уважаемые коллеги! Я рад вновь приветствовать. Спасибо большое, мистер Президент! Коллеги, once again, I'm glad to welcome all of you to this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Russian Geographic Society. We are having our traditional meeting today, and it underlines that no pandemic can prevent the society from doing its work. It's been with us for more than 170 years. The society has seen two world wars, a number of revolutions, but not a single day did it stop its work, and it's carrying out its work even though the pandemic is in full swing. Let me take stock of the last decade. Because 10 years ago, the Board of Trustees of the society was established under your chairmanship, мистер Президент. We had to mark this occasion last year, but we couldn't. Since 2010, we rebuilt the regional network of the society. There are 85 branches in all Russian regions, and 159 local offices that have held more than 35,000 events, which is more than we used to see when the Geographic Society of the Soviet Union was in full bloom back in the 1980s. Parallel to that, we have established a youth movement with 184 clubs in 75 regions in Russia, as well as in 10 countries abroad. So we have built a framework we use to broadcast our ideology of conscientiously studying Russia and serving it. We are given priority to mass-scale information awareness events, and over the last decade, more than 50 million people have visited these events in 100 countries across the world. There are festivals of the society, exhibitions in the streets, and public lectures, and during the pandemic, we've migrated online. The number of participants, our audience, have even increased. We have landmark projects of international scale, such as the photo competition "The Most Beautiful Country" that has gathered more than 570,000 photos of Russia from 82,000 photographs, and also the Geographic Quiz, which is a global educational initiative. More than 1,700,000 people in 120 countries have taken part in the quiz. More than 3,000 events, expeditions have taken place, from across-the-globe events to different smaller-scale events. The society is not just carrying out its own initiatives, it is also helping with the projects in the field of geography and preserving our natural and cultural heritage. It's working actively with the young people. Since 2010, the society has allocated 1,170 grants to the tune of more than 2 billion rubles, and it's published more than 3,000 different books and magazines, for which I would like to thank the Board of Trustees once again. And the overall number of geography textbooks that have been studied by the experts is 1,200,000 copies. Over the last 10 years, the society has launched 5 million anniversary coins and 27 million stamps, envelopes, and cards dedicated to the society, to its notable members, and to its history. The websites of the society have become one of the biggest information and enlightenment resources in geography. Since 2012, around 24 million people have visited our websites, and the number of views has risen to more than 70 million. Millions. I would like to remind you that the society does not get any state of public funding. So what I'm telling you about, all these achievements have been made possible thanks to your support, мистер Президент, and thanks to the support of the Board of Trustees. And there are a great number of patrons, even though formally they are not members of the Board of Trustees, but they share our ideology and they actively support our projects. Thanks to their support, we've managed to digitize even more content from our funds, and a unique film has been created, which is called "Russia Virtual Journey", which is a 3D movie. And the society is mentioned by the media more and more, the number of mentions has risen 25-fold. I would like to thank the members of the Media Council of the society, and in particular, the head of the council, мистер Peskov. Thanks to your activities, what the society is doing does not remain unseen. In 2020, The First Channel, The Culture Channel, and Svisda Channel have broadcast a series of documentaries, which were made thanks to the grants from the society. I would like to thank мистер Эрнст, мистер Шумаков, и мистер Пиманов, and we would like to ask other broadcasters to follow in their footsteps. And the biggest information agencies such as TAS, Russia Today, pay attention to what we're doing. Other reputable medias such as Rosiskaya Gazeta and Komsomolskaya Prawda are also following our activities. And in the next five years, it is important to adopt new approaches that are in line with the global trends. We have started to implement a number of projects. We are using augmented reality to add to the captivation of guided tours, expeditions, and exhibitions, and we will use cutting-edge technologies so as not dozens and hundreds of thousands, but millions and dozens of millions of people could migrate towards the society and its values, share such values as patriotism, and also a spirit of exploration and research. And right now, I would like to move on to the next item on our agenda. I'm going to introduce our speakers today. This year, we are launching the fourth edition of joint expedition of the society and the Northern Fleet. They are studying the Arctic archipelagos. Biologists, glaciologists, hydrographers, and seismologists are working together. We're also following in the footsteps of the Arctic expeditions of the 19th and the 20th century. We are searching for things that show how the Arctic used to be researched. We find artifacts from the expeditions of Vladimir Rusinov, Georgi SEDOV, Leonid Grunivetsky, and other notable polar researchers. We've got two young people, Sergey Zinchenko and Pavel Philen, they're here in the audience today. They took part in the expedition of the 2020. Let's listen to what they have to say. Mister President, colleagues, over the three years that our expedition has been carrying out, we have had six expedition groups. They have traversed 1,600 kilometers by land and more than 20,000 miles through seas, and we have collected more than 400 artifacts, many of them in Novosymla last year. Under my leadership, we managed to find items from Fyodor Rosmislav winter camp, namely a cross and a musket ball. We have also located the remains of the supply station of the Austro-Hungarian expedition of Vipravt Empire of the 19th century. We've also found survey markers from Georgi SEDOV's expedition, which took place at the beginning of the 20th century. The leading Russian scholars and scientists are taking part in the expedition, and thanks to that, we've managed to find new facts. We established the maximum depth of the Barents Sea, which is 634 meters. We also measured the depth at some channels and straits at France-Joseph Land, and we also mapped five new islands in Novosymla and an island in France-Joseph Islands. We have new partners, the schoolchildren from the RISC-SAT group. They used satellite imagery and found a new island off the coast of Novosymla, and we managed to map them, and we brought some stones from the expedition and gave them to those pupils, those schoolchildren. And we also managed to search, find, and describe with several facilities. We found the trading post of Pactusov and fisheries and the eastern coastline of Novosymla. We found a polar winter camp in Blagopoluchia by Novosymla. It was completely destroyed by the Nazis. And we also have a website about Grunivetsky and his expedition. I've brought it with me. Right now, Paulson Publishing House is going to prepare a book about the exploration of France-Joseph Land. For many years, sailors and naval officers have been participating and exploring the Arctic. Right now, the Russian Navy is continuing with this great duty, and they are studying the northern facade of Russia, as one of our admirals used to call the Arctic coast of Russia. Yes, thank you. Sergey's team worked in Novosymla, and our icebreaker, Ilya Morimets, studied the northern sea route. Several achievements. First, 100 kilometers south from Dixon, we've located the sinking Veigach icebreaker in 1930. It participated in the discovery of Emperor Nicholas II land. We managed to locate it thanks to sonar at the depth of 20 meters. We examined it with an AUV, but we need divers to study it more closely. We also studied the winter camps of Russian explorers of the 18th century. Back in 1945, many artifacts were found, but still, it's one of the greatest mysteries of the Arctic. We do not understand entirely where they were sailing, and we need to continue our research there. Third, due to stormy weather, we did not land at the DeLong Islands, but you can see there is a gasp bloom over Bennett Island, and there are different opinions as to why this is happening. Some say this is volcanic activity, some deny that. We need to understand whether that is truly the case or not. Another thing, there is a unique port building in the settlement of Dixon. You can see it on the screen. Unfortunately, it is falling apart right in front of our eyes. But there are other positive examples when such buildings are preserved, like Buktetikaya in France-Joseph Land. Now, in the Chukchi Sea, we managed to locate Soviet steamship Chelyuskin, which sank back in 1934. We also created a 3D model, and we need to preserve such cultural heritage, because this is one of the most important things, preserving our legacy, cultural legacy, historic legacy, and it's important that our business also pays attention to that. So under the Russian chairmanship and the Arctic Council, it would be worthwhile studying how we can preserve this cultural legacy. So far, there are proposals to that end, but they have not been supported. There is another serious problem, мистер Президент. Right now, the current legislation of Russia prevents us from establishing a protection system for such artifacts, for such objects, because they are outside our territorial waters, and it is the Russian regions that are responsible for that, and they cannot carry out this activity at sea. So there is a vicious circle. The State Duma has a draft law, which would allow us to address this issue, but over these years, there's been only one reading of the law, and I would like to draw your attention to that. Thank you.
Well, right now, indeed, the State Duma is studying this issue. We'll try to agree with our colleagues and to get them to act more actively on that issue. Indeed, this requires a solution. This is both a historic and a scientific issue, in the widest sense of the word, and it's also a memorial issue, because, for example, throughout the Second World War, naturally, during the fighting at sea, the Soviet Union has lost about 900 ships and vessels and more, a million of different boats. 700 or 800,000, a lot of fishing boats and other boats. So a lot of ships and submarines have been sunk together with their crews, and according to the naval tradition, this is a burial ground for naval officers and sailors. The majority of them are still unknown, they haven't been found. It's unknown where they have been lost, and this is a lot of work. You have to define the region, you have to define the order of inspection and research, the rules of conduct, the rules for underwater tourism, and so on. Thank you for pointing it out, and we'll deal with that. Indeed, we will have to deal with that more actively. I'd like to ask the government and the parliamentarians to look at that as well, at the State Duma, and to get the law in place. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Also, let's continue. This year, there will be yet another part of this expedition. This year, it will take place on Novosymla Archipelago. In May, Russia will become the chair of the Arctic Council, that's called to help facilitate cooperation in the Arctic region. This is an opportunity to strengthen the role of our country as coordinator and initiator of many programs in this zone. I know that one of our trustees has specific proposals. This is мистер Палсон. Please, you have the floor.
Hello, мистер Президент, dear colleagues. Given that Russia is the single most important country in the Arctic, covering almost half of the coastline, the upcoming chairmanship of the Arctic Council will provide a unique opportunity to demonstrate Russia's commitment to the Arctic. One suggestion would be to put together a group of interested trustees to promote the activities of the Russian Geographic Society within the framework. Several ideas could be pursued that are within the remit of the RGO. For instance, establishing an ice camp at the North Pole, where we could receive the delegates from the Arctic Council members. And, as I have explained previously, there remains one expedition in the region that has never been done, and that is the circumnavigation of the Arctic in one single season. The purpose of such an expedition would be for a research vessel to traverse the Arctic basin, visiting all the islands of the Arctic Ocean as shown on the projected map. In addition to Russian researchers, a large number of international specialists could be invited to participate in the expedition, repeating the very successful experience of the 2016-17 Antarctic expedition. The plan would be to invite 10 to 15 researchers in different groups to join the expedition to carry out atmospheric, glaciological, and oceanography research observations. Some of these places on board would also be provided to students from the Floating University organized by the RGO. And I believe this could be an extraordinary opportunity for the RGO to organize a historic expedition while at the same time celebrating Russia's chairmanship of the Arctic Council. As regards short-term suggestions, an exhibition could be organized in Moscow, presenting the RGO's new book, "Arctic Archipelago", which I think all of you have here, and also to display some of the photographs from the book. This could, of course, be combined with an exhibition describing RGO's contribution to the Arctic exploration over the last 200 years. Finally, in October, it is proposed that the RGO could hold an international conference in Moscow marking the 106th anniversary of the birth of Frichov Nansen. And as you might know, he was actually a member of the RGO. And this could be attended by the Norwegian ambassador, and of course, many researchers from both Norway, Russia, and other countries. It would indeed be a pleasure for me to support these suggestions, and I hope they will be of interest to the trustees of RGO. Nevertheless, in the order to implement the circumnavigation of the Arctic basin expedition, there is absolutely necessary to get the support from the RGO. On the subject of RGO's polar engagement, I would like to take this opportunity to thank мистер Leonid Viktorovich Mickelson for his commitment to the Vostok Station. This is another example of how the Russian polar research can be combined as a catalyst for international collaboration through the RGO. Thank you very much for your attention.
Спасибо, Фредрик. Спасибо, Фредрик. Спасибо. Мистер Путин, Президент, would you like to add something? Indeed, I fully support what has just been said. Indeed, Russia will become the chair in the Arctic Council in May. And by the way, yesterday, with my Finnish colleague, the President of Finland, we spoke about the work within the Arctic Council. And despite all difficulties that we're going through today in international affairs, the attention to the Arctic and work there remains the same. Six countries that the members of the Arctic Council continue to closely cooperate within this institution. And the suggestions that we have just heard, indeed, are very interesting. In 2022, we'll celebrate an anniversary of the first Soviet Arctic station that used to work there. The Arctic is of interest not only to the countries of the Arctic Council, naturally, because this region of the world shows us most outstandingly, most visually, the climate changes on the planet, on the whole. They're most apparent there. Therefore, the research in the Arctic zone is of interest to the whole humanity, without any doubt. Now, that's the first thing. Now, the second thing, we're working more and more actively in our economic activity. The northern sea route and its navigation, I also discussed it with several colleagues Russia is building the most powerful icebreaker fleet, including such giant ships as Lider Ship. No one has built such a ship before. And I'd like to say it again, that we spoke just yesterday, that in the nearest future, in the nearest few years, navigation of the northern sea route might become around the year navigation. And the climate change, that's consequences cannot be predicted for 100%, 100% precisely for now. So this climate change is important for our country as well, because we have whole because we have whole cities beyond the polar circle, built back in the Soviet times, and people live there. And if permafrost continues to melt, we need to understand what will happen there. From many points of view, the research in the Arctic is of utmost importance for Russia and the whole world. So, naturally, we'll deal with that. And I'd like to ask colleagues from the government of the Russian Federation to work on your proposals and to make a decision. As for you and your colleagues, I'd like to invite you to the forum in the fall. It will be dedicated to the research in the Arctic as a part of our chairmanship in the Arctic Council, and I hope you'll actively take part in that work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Frederick. Frederick is a very avid traveler. He has traveled to all the poles of the earth, all the poles that are there. He does a lot in outreach and education, engaging young scientists. As for engaging young scientists, I'd like to give the floor to Bernard Looney, the chief executive director of a group of BP company. He'll talk about our educational project, Volga Floating University. Please, you have the floor.
I am delighted to say that BP has been a partner of the Russian Geographic Society for ten years. Throughout this time, we have supported a broad range of projects and initiatives which we see as being positive for society and the well-being of people. And I'm specifically pleased to stress the attention paid by the society to activities related to climate, as the president just mentioned, and environmental studies, something that impacts billions of people on our planet today. This resonates with BP, given our own ambitions to become a net-zero company. Given this, it was a special pleasure for us to join Russian Geographic Society in support of this joint initiative with the Volga State University of Water Transport. As a boy growing up in Ireland, a country much, much smaller than Russia, but with something deep in common with Russia, which is a deep commitment to education. It was there I learned of the great Volga River and its importance. And today, I am honored to support this project to study the ecological condition of the Volga River. This was a floating expedition of students and scientists from a consortium of leading Russian universities aboard a research vessel. A truly unique project. Almost two thousand kilometers of waterways of Volga Basin were explored last year, more than three thousand hydrophysical and chemical observations of water were carried out. The expedition worked in different regions of the Volga Basin, studying various areas of biodiversity of the river. Multiple routine observations were carried out by students and scientists with the use of advanced equipment allowed to collect valuable data points. The findings helped to understand the impact of anthropogenic factors such as the operations of hydro power stations on populations of toxic plants, formation of currents and consequences of man-made activities for the diverse plankton of the Volga River. And one of the important results that was achieved by the project was the development of a new approach to the methodology of satellite radar monitoring of bioproductivity of the Volga Basin and its pollution. In the future, this can be part of a wider comprehensive system of ecological monitoring of the Volga. And I'm pleased to say, delighted to say, that the project will continue and will focus on some new areas. Firstly, the project participants are planning to extend their research into the ecological condition of the basin. In particular, there is an intention to evaluate the role of rivers and water reservoirs in the circulation balance of greenhouse gas emissions such as carbon dioxide and methane. In my view, this is important, given Russia's world-leading reserves of pure water and forests, as well as the more obvious relationship between the availability of clean water and the growth of forests. And secondly, we hope that the continuation of the project at greater scale and new findings will help to contribute to the federal government's program, rehabilitation of Volga. The life of millions of people should improve with these ecological insights, data, and increased scientific research. And from our side, we are committed to continue supporting the Russian Geographic Society and the Volga University in these activities. We will do so as BP and with the support of our partner Rosneft and my dear friend Igor Ivanovich. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you. Thank you for your intervention, thank you for joining the work of the Russian Geographic Society. Your dear friend Igor Ivanovich is resting right now, I think. But I do know that he's also very actively taking part in supporting the environmental agenda. Indeed, trying to be net-neutral company, carbon-neutral company analyst is a noble goal. And I know that your company is dedicating a lot of effort and money to research on this part. I know that your cooperation with Rosneft is quite successful, and the turnaround of your company, and I mean, increasing commercial oil stock that you have, that also has a positive impact. And as for me, I can say that we're happy with this cooperation and the way it's going, and the fact that you believe it's possible to take part in such environmental projects as monitoring the environmental condition and research of Volga River, that's very important for us, that's quite a sensitive matter here, because Volga is it's not just a river. It's not just navigation or economic activity, that is also very important. We're working on that more actively than before. And for Russia, Volga is of special significance. This is one of these elements and symbols of our statehood. So, we really hope that your impact, that the part that you play in our joint efforts to preserve Volga River in the widest sense of this word will be very prominent, and I'd like to thank you for that. Evermore so is that you're doing that with a Russian higher education facility, and you're engaging in helping young people, young researchers, that's also very important. So, a big thank you to you. Thank you, Bernard. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to address Bernard and suggest that that you could take part in the project. We have a lot of young scientists and students from abroad. So, the number of countries that had taken part in that was up to sixty-seven countries of the world, and different countries from Latin America, from Europe, all of Europe, Southeast Asia, and many others. So, maybe as a part of that project, the Floating University, could we maybe, I mean, maybe you as BP could organize an international competition to engage young researchers to take part in this project, which could maybe be later distributed or transferred not only to Volga, but to other basins and other territories of our country. Now, I would like to introduce another major project of this year, the study of airfields on Al-Sib, air route, air road, Alaska, Siberia. It was done by an outstanding generation, a very strong generation, a selfless generation. Through Alaska, from Alaska to through Chikotka to Yekutia, up to Krasnoyarsk, a number of airplanes were flown. And what was done is the twenty-six airfields were built with the necessary infrastructure, and many runways are being used up until now. Our project is dedicated to comprehensive study of the building and operation of these airfields. Right now, historians are working in archives, preparing for this expedition. And one of them, Sergey Kotkov, will speak in detail about that.
Thank you, Minister. Mr. President, distinguished participants of the Board of Trustees. There may be difficult time, the war is raging, the whole country is thinking how to make the victory any nearer. Just imagine, usually, the construction of airports takes years. I mean, terrible conditions, minus fifty degrees centigrade. Our people managed to build runways just in five to eight months, and they used unique technologies that managed to make the victory nearer. And these runways are still operational and functional. The state archives of both Russia and the Ministry of Defense, there are dozens of thousands of original documents dedicated to construction, maintenance, and operation of the air road, and we establish several interesting facts. Just look at the heating machines that the US sent to make sure you can launch the engine. But they could be used only when the temperature was no lower than minus eight degrees or ten degrees. And we had to come up with a solution which could work under minus fifty degrees. So, the US and the Soviet Union managed to pull the efforts together to fight against the common enemy Nazism. And more than eight thousand American aircraft were flown over Chikotka by the Russian pilots. But there were very few catastrophes and incidents. There was one incident when there was a crash because the aircraft came against a kite. So, all of this is very important. We are searching the crash sites and forced landing sites to establish memorial signs in honor of the pilots. And for the first time in history, our researchers and also scientists are going to conduct a comprehensive onsite study at all the airfields of Al-Sib, using different methods. And we are going to study the history of the air roads, the current conditions, the prospects for using these airfields and the infrastructure that remains. And that is very important, because so far, we do not have any definitive say on how important this air road was and the land lease program. We know that two allies came together, even though there had been some confrontation before that, but they decided to join their hands to fight the Nazi Germany. And there are still different assessments as to how important the contribution of the allies was. Some say that it was a definitive contribution, a decisive one. Others say that the assistance came too late, and we would have won regardless. What do you think, Mr. President, on this issue? Well, we could cite the opinion of those who forged the victory of the Soviet Union and the Second World War. One of the key figures back then was Marshal Zhukov. And if my memory serves me correctly, he used to say that hadn't it not been for the supplies under the land lease agreement, they would have had to fight for another year or two, which would have meant more victims, more casualties, more destruction, more damage. During the Second World War, and we know that from the movies of the Soviet Times and from the books, they used to call the meat preserves as the second front line. And eighty percent of the needs in this preserved meat was through the supplies under the land lease agreement. And the most important thing we got under this agreement was metal. And this metal supplies were of huge importance for our defense industry. There were other supplies too, which had a great meaning, great significance, of course. I refer in particular to the direct supplies of military equipment, rolling stock, aircraft, cars, aircraft in particular. The air road you mentioned is unique, because the aircraft had to work under terrible conditions. The American pilots used to say that only suicide pilots and Russian pilots could operate aircraft. I mean, these harsh conditions. It was a heroic page of our history, the history of the Second World War, and few know about that. And I would like to thank you for taking up this difficult subject. But be that as it may, of course, I'm confident that the land lease agreement and all that played an important role in securing a victory over the common foe, Nazi Germany. But these supplies were not free of charge, to be honest. Back in the nineteen ninety, after the meeting between the presidents of the USSR and the US, an agreement was signed, according to which the Soviet Union had to pay back the remaining money owed for land lease. And the deadline was until 2030. And Russia has paid back everything it owed to the US under the land lease agreement back in 2006. So, back then, this story was clear, the page was turned. Russia has paid back to the full everything it had owed. So, it was about interstate relations, and they were commercial in nature and also strategic too. But the most important thing in all of this is the people who did all of this. You said that you are studying this airway which was used to flow combat aircraft from Alaska to the front lines, but there were other air roads over the northern seas. There is one thing I would like to underline. The people who did that were heroes, without exaggeration, because they risked their lives, and many of them perished. And these are veterans we treat as heroes, as our family. And we treat them the same way as we treat the veterans of the Second World War who fought at the front lines. These people are heroes, and they will always, forever, be in our heart. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take this opportunity to raise another subject related to Al-Sib. You know that we've started working in the archives. Our search expeditions have gone to the crash sites, and all of that has yielded us a great body of evidence. And American historians and Western historians show a great interest in that. So, Minister Shoyguhr, is it worthwhile thinking about a single depository for all of this body of evidence? So that not just Russians, but also people from abroad, historians, specialists, enthusiasts could come and get acquainted with all of this materials? Yes, thank you, Sergey, this is a very good idea, this is something we need. We have many facts, I wouldn't call them artifacts. Facts, that's what they are. Facts about what was manufactured in our country, and what was exported to our country. And we are still continuing our expedition to get back to the surface. The Sherman tanks that were transported by Estima to Murmansk, we've managed to raise some of them to the surface, others are still on the seafloor. Some have already been renovated and retrofitted and made operational once again. One of those Sherman tanks, Mr. President, we would like to give them, give one of those Sherman tanks back to the US as a token of gratitude and memory. Now, I know that the Siberian branch of the Russian Now, I know that the Siberian branch of the Russian Geographical Society in Krasnaya Ssk wants to build a museum on Molokov Island. They would like to set up a museum dedicated to the exploration of the Arctic. And I think we could place this exhibition there, the one you've mentioned. But of course, there still remains a lot to be done. You know, many pilots got lost in the clouds or they went in the wrong direction because of the navigation equipment they had. And some had to make forced landing, some ran out of fuel. The same goes for the Douglas aircraft that was located last year by people from Krasnaya Ssk in the Tundra on Timer Island. There was a whole documentary dedicated to this find. And we showed it at the Board of Trustees. So there were plans for such a documentary and a movie. And some TV channels wanted to make a movie about pilots lost in the Tundra and how they survive. Some of them perished, some of them got rescued. So it's kind of a legend, this expedition, and would make a good subject for a movie. And I think, anyway, the exhibition will find its rightful place somewhere. There is another project. This year marks eighty years since the destruction of Armenia Steamship. In November nineteen forty-one, the Nazi bombers sank the vessel that was used to evacuate injured soldiers and civilians from Sebastopol and Yalta that were under siege. According to different data, this is one of the biggest tragedies over the course of the Russian history. From four and a half to ten thousand people perished in this tragedy. And for eighty years, no one knew the exact spot where the vessel sank. But last year, the Ministry of Defense and the Underwater Research Center of the society managed to locate it and identify it. And there are new data. Sergei Fokin from the Underwater Research Center, the floor is yours. Thank you, Minister. Thank you, dear trustees. We came back from sea just three days ago and we're going to get back there once again. This sortie has provided us with many new data, many food for thought. There are many questions that still require an answer. We used an autonomous underwater vehicle with a high resolution camera. We managed to get new images from the depth of one and a half kilometers. That's where Armenia is lying. The system was created thanks to the specialists of our center. On the screen, you can see the difference between the old images and the new images. We examined the steamship and we see that the damage must have come from an air bomb, which corroborates our version that it was a bomber attack, not a torpedo bomber attack, as some sources claimed. And we managed to find one of the guns that were mounted on Armenia when it was retrofitted in nineteen forty-one. It's in transportation mode, the gun barrel was parallel to the deck. So they did not manage to make it battle ready, nor was this gun used to fire at the enemy. The most important thing, the examination has shed doubt on another widespread version saying that the ship sank in four minutes, leaving no chance to anyone to escape. The starboard has revealed that none of the ten lifeboats had the designated, were at the designated spots. There were none on the seafloor either. So the lifeboats must have been launched. The steamship must have been afloat for at least fifteen to twenty minutes. So at least five hundred people must have had a chance to escape. The hatch for landing, for loading cargo out of the stern was open. So some people must have escaped that way. We still have to examine the ship's port. But there are many questions that cannot be answered by this examination. That's why we managed to launch a new project, Steamship Armenia. Remember, everyone, we are getting together archival data to make a list. We have several hundred names that have been corroborated and some are still being under study. So we will get information on the last passengers of Armenia. Sometimes testimonies, we get, we confirm them through archival data. We are working in different archives. Some archives are still not open to the public. And we're hopeful that very soon we will get access to Gacchina archive and the FSB archive and also the archives in the Crimea. Thank you, Sergei. It's very important. This project is very important. And it's important to remember this tragedy, not to lose sight of it. Anastasia, the floor, over to you. Thank you, Minister. Since the very beginning of working on this project, we've been paying a great deal of attention to the media component right now. The society is working together with NTV Channel, preparing a big documentary on Armenia Steamship. The author of the movie is Elizaveta Listova. She's a talented journalist. She is going to try to reconstruct all the events of November nineteen forty-one with the utmost detail. And we've got Alexey Zemsky from the Media Council. He is Director General of NTV. Could you tell us when you plan to broadcast the movie? Do you have any new information? Good day, colleagues. First, I would like to thank the society for choosing NTV as its media partner. NTV is part of Gazprom, albeit a small one. Let me quote Mr. Miller, who said before the meeting that NTV would perform any task it received. And the task we have received is indeed very difficult. We searched for people eighty years since without any documents. We've managed to find, to locate the grandson of the captain of Armenia. And he says that no documents have been left. The whole family were evacuated from Odessa without their belongings, without anything, just as they were. We've got a list of the coup, the list of doctors from Sebastopol Naval Hospital that perished. But unfortunately, we cannot get the history of a person from this list. A personal dossier can only be issued to the family of those who died. But sometimes there are no families, no family members or relatives because whole families were evacuated and some of them perished in their entirely, entirety. So right now, we are trying to establish the average number of people, the approximate number of people who were on board. We do not understand whether there were one thousand people or five thousand people or many more than that. Right now, we're trying to understand how many people managed to escape. Officially, it's just six people, official survivors. Whereas the lifeboats that we have not managed to locate could have carried another five hundred. But I'm pleased to say that we get a very positive response to our requests for assistance. We get assistance from ministries, from the Black Sea Fleet, from hydroographers, from medics, from archives, both medical and civilian archives. Even the research bureau that made Armenia responded positively to our requests. So we are trying to get those details from everywhere. And we plan to broadcast the documentary on November the seventh. And it's going to be the sad anniversary since the sinking of the ship. Yes, so far, we do not have enough facts, but we're trying to do our best. And we would like to promote it too. Some still prefer traditional media and watch TV. But there are younger people who get their information from the internet. And education is migrating online. So we deem very important our cooperation with Yandex Holding. I would like to give the floor to Mr. Hudyverdyan. We started recently, but we've done a lot since then.
Good afternoon. Hello, everyone. Mr. President, Mr. Minister, dear members of the board. Today, I'd like to talk to, well, to change the topic of the conversation a little bit. I think it will be quite extraordinary compared to all statements before. We're talking about a very important technology that we have been working for many years now. We're talking about a multi-dimensional map of the world. We know that there are geographic maps, physical relief maps and so on. But for now, we need a modern map with thousands of layers of digital data and services. The very map itself, as well as the layers of the data and services, should be updated regularly, should, they should be live even. We're not only talking about streets in the city with crossings and streetlights, but also about shops and their ratings and reviews, navigation within the cities for all means of transportation with an extra precise forecast for the time of departure, time till destination. Now, it has become a habit of ours. And when Mr. Minister spoke about the generation under thirty and when you tell them the word "the map", and for them, the map is something completely different and something a lot more functional. What they want there is basically everything. And such a map is necessary for all sectors of the economy, for all digital services. Even a weather forecast is a layer on the map. People are looking at cloud movements to learn when, when the rain will be over. It's just the real behavior of modern users. The precision of the forecast on the movement of the clouds is basically one or three minutes. Together with the Russian Geographical Society, we have mapped more than two thousand objects in the Antarctic. We have changed the, made more precise the boundaries and changed the names of landforms and place names. Together with the expertise of the Russian Geographical Society, we have created a digital cartography lesson for schools. And children learn how to draw a modern digital map, how to edit it, how to update it. And forty thousand children have been through that class already. This year, together with RGS, will create an interactive view of Ujuni and Severny Islands of Novozembla. It will be available to all users of Yandex. I think it's very topical for the post-COVID era. When people got a taste of domestic tourism, will add extra tourist routes as well as wild trails. People want to travel in Russia, but they don't know how to do that. So that will be yet another way to learn what kind of reserves you can travel, where you can walk, where you can hike. Today, we have more than six hundred websites using Yandex websites and in, and they're in the information layers of the maps in their own websites. Yandex Maps are fully open to users, to public institutions. And fifty million people use Yandex Maps, either on the Yandex website or in other places. This mapping technology is very complex. And there are only four or five companies in the world who have this product. This is Google and Microsoft, Chinese Baidu search engine and two Russian companies, that's Double Kiss from Zbir ecosystem and Yandex. There are no other global maps. Now, a few words about the future, the way it will develop. Today, in Moscow, you can see small UAVs, rover cars, about sixty or seventy centimeters long. And they're delivering food and packages. This is an unmanned rover, a pilot project for Yandex. We're trying to solve an issue of deliveries in the cities. And for these rovers to be able to orientate themselves and navigate, they require new maps of the cities. We're talking about centimeter precision. So what will be the next ten years for the mapping of the future? That would be besides developing a multi-dimensional map. We'll be talking about high-precision maps. For example, like for the rover to be able to, to make way, to know its road in the city. We need to create a multi-dimensional map of the world. This is a fundamental part of development of digital economy and digital services. We're working together with the Russian Geographical Society. And that gives us a chance to make digital maps more interesting and more precise for millions of people. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Hudyverdyan. Thank you. Mr. President, we have two other colleagues on the list of our speakers and other members of the Board of Trustees. If you'd allow, I'd like to give the floor to Mr. Mikulson, who will talk about the construction of a new winter camp for Bostok Station in the Antarctic. Please, you have the floor. Mr. President, Mr. Minister, dear members of the Board of Trustees. Russia is represented by five all-year-round stations in the Antarctic. The Southern Most Station, Bostok, was founded in nineteen fifty-seven. And it has, it has been dilapidated up to ninety percent. It's under three meters of snow, but it still continues to operate. It studies the climate change and solar activity as well as other geophysical events. Bostok has the deepest climate boring drilling. In nineteen sixty, we have explored the Relict Lake, Bostok, comparable to Ladowskaya Lake. Thirty-seven hundred meters long. You can see the, this long sample. It's called a Kern. The government has ordered to create a new winter camp, a complex of stations that requires to prepare the building, the construction, the modules for that. It costs about ten billion rubles. And sixty percent of that comes from the federal budget and forty percent is provided by the private means. The work on producing the winter cap have been finalized. And right now, you can see the way it was all assembled in Gacchina. It was the control assembly. This is high-tech reliability with the four or five-time extra resilience built in and two years autonomous survival for the people, for two years. It consists of five modules of general three thousand square meters with living rooms, with offices, fifteen people in the winter and thirty-five in the summer. Before that, you could see that the modules could regulate its height according to the snow caps there. The platform for assembly that has already been prepared, about three meters extra layer has been put on. It has been specifically, extra measures have been taken to densen the ground. You can also see the platform. You can see the transportation. Eleven transportation vehicles have been created for that. And five of them have been tested. As for naval transportation, it has started last October. You can see the way it was done. It was done for budget money. It was done for budget money, done by Rosatom Vessel through the Northern Seaward. However, throughout the research around Angola, there was a breakdown of the rotor of the engine. And since it's impossible to repair a nuclear boat outside of Russia, we had to recall the ship back to Saint Petersburg. This was perceived negatively by the foreign participants of the Contract on the Antarctic, who were wary of an incident with a nuclear ship in the Antarctic. And Mr. Lavrov also expressed concern about that. So when we'll transport this station next, we'll have more than two regular ships, but that would require extra expenses of about five hundred eighty million rubles. Also, the executor of the contract has incurred major expenses of about seven hundred and fifty million rubles. The participants of those projects have concerns. We have talked to the government about the situation, and we receive support and understanding. And we truly hope that it will be possible to deliver these modules to the Antarctic this year, and that would allow us to bring back to operation the Bostok Station by 2024. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mikulson. I hope you'll be successful, and I'd like the government to support you. I hope it all goes well, meaning your experience in working in our north, in the Arctic. First and foremost, the implementation of the project of the Arctic LNG. And I know that the work is going and very successfully on Arctic LNG Two. You also have other projects. I have been reported to about that. I'm positive that this project in the South Pole would also be a success and will do everything to support you naturally. Thank you so much, Mr. President. We will succeed, of course. After you said that you'll ask the government to do it, then it's a given. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Now, the next speaker is the person who deals with all the cats, tigers, leopards. Besides, there's no leopard, as far as I know, for now. Now, Mr. Ivanov. Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Minister, this year, the foundation will celebrate ten years. It's been ten years since we started the project to save the Amur leopard under the aegis of the Russian Geographical Society. We have started that simultaneously. I remember then that some scientists, biologists and experts said that you won't be able to save them. We're beyond the verge of extinction. There were about thirty leopards. No one knew how many precisely. But when I was still the, when you were still the chair of the government, you said, "Sign an order to create a national park called the Land of the Leopard", two hundred sixty-two thousand hectares. That's a lot of territory. I have reported to you. And here in the society, in the previous years as well, we have enough experience, and I think any national park can use this. Not just any park, but other protected territories. For example, Amur tigers. We're also protecting them, thanks to you, as well as polar bears and beluga whales and gray whales. First of all, the status of a national park allows to give the organizational and legal framework that without it, it won't be possible. And we did that in 2012, thanks to you. We have organized good protection with all the means of transportation, navigation, communications. We have equipped our inspectors very well, those who are working in national parks. And quite recently, we gave them service weapons, observing all mandates of the Russian National Guard. Poaching for several years is amiss. It has stopped. Besides, the national park has about four hundred wildlife cameras, camera traps, that allow for the scientists to identify each and every leopard. I'd like to remind you that the spots on the leopard is just like a fingerprint. None of the animals are identical. They have their own unique spots. What did that lead to? Quite recently, in London, there was a world competition for the best wildlife picture. Forty-nine thousand photographs and photographers took part in that. And you can see the winner here. This is our professional photographer, Sergey Gorshkov, made this picture on the territory of Land of Leopard. This is a beauty of a tiger. She's very well-fed, you can see that. She just gave birth. She's not pregnant. She has kittens. And she's rubbing on a signal tree. This is a big cedar pine at the crossing of trails of bears, leopards. We have a picture where a leopard is also rubbing himself against it, as well as a bear. What I would like to highlight, knowing your special attitude toward the Amur tiger, Mr. President. When we started, as they're called, there were no resident tigers on the territory. And right now, we have twenty-five of them. We have them at head count. What does it tell us? It turns out that cats are very smart as soon as they learn that they're not being killed there and the human is not persecuting them. And we're also helping them to feed. We have special farms for hogs and rogues to feed the leopards and the tigers. So Amur tiger is now very present there. And they're actually having very dense population there. We also dealt with the infrastructure. As you know, we have built in a special environmental tunnel in Narva. And for a reason, because previously, there were historical roots of migration for wildlife. And we can see that animals are going those trails again. They have the genetic memory. They remember the good trails. So we started to develop environmental tourism. We have more wildlife trails. And more Russians want to travel to these national parks to do research. All you can see, those beauties of rubbing. Yeah, they're using the same signal tree. And the last thing. Quite often, as it happens, when you're solving one task, and I think we have solved this task, and we have that more than one hundred wild Amur leopards. They're not endangered anymore. Plus the tigers as well. Now, we have a new issue. Now, they don't have enough space despite the fact that they have two hundred sixty-two thousand hectares. Each leopard and tiger requires his own space. We looked at the Far East, and we can see Usurwisky National Park, as nothing has happened there. It's just for hunting. And we're bringing together as a branch of the Land of Leopard. Why did we choose this land? Because before, leopards used to live there and before they were pushed out of there. And we will hope to bring the youngsters to this new territory. So that in the Far East, in Primorskii region, there'll be about one hundred and fifty leopards. And scientists think that this is a guarantee that they will not die out, they will not go extinct. We think that it's a great solution to a task so important for Russia. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Ivanov.
I remember how this project started. We had seen back then some positive results in preserving the population of the Amur tiger. And we decided to take the next step and to save the Amur leopard. So joining additional territories to the national park is of great, of huge importance. And should you require any additional support, just tell me. As I can see, all those who have wanted to take the floor have already done so. My question goes to other participants of our today's meeting. Does anyone want to add anything, make a comment, share an idea, a proposal on the topics that we've covered on our today's agenda? Well, Mr. President, everyone hopes for a personal meeting. Maybe it's going to take place this year, this summer, because traditionally, we bring members of the society from across the country somewhere to a spot where you can talk in nature and also have a personal meeting. Yes, that's something I mentioned at the very beginning of our today's session. We are gonna do something like that, for sure. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the unprecedented support that we are seeing from you to the Russian Geographical Society, to the activities of its Board of Trustees, the projects the society is engaged in. Luckily, the number of these projects grows, year in, year out. It would seem, everything has already been studied and explored, but that is not true. That is not the case. We've got so much more to study and to learn. So, Mr. President, thank you for helping you, for helping. I, for one, would like to thank Mr. Shoygu and all our colleagues and friends, our allies, those of the same mind as we are for doing this important cause. And if there is anything that is not interesting enough yet, it is up to us to make it even more interesting and captivating. And this is something I hope for. I know that all of you are full of enthusiasm. You are successful. You have managed to secure prominent achievements in the fields that you work in professionally. And you're also making a contribution to the Russian Geographical Society, which testifies to your interest and enthusiasm as well. And I'm hopeful that this interest of yours is going to be sustained and is also going to be sort of a guiding star for all of us that'll show us the way to our common goal, which is to preserve the environment and to make millions of people closer to nature, to help people know nature better. I'm confident that the achievements in this direction will give you greater satisfaction, will help you achieve self-fulfillment. And this, in turn, will help millions of people. And I would like to thank you once again and wish you all the best. And I'm looking forward to seeing you, maybe this summer. And by this summer, if we meet, I would like to request that you should get ready for that so that we not just sit and have lunch, but also talk about the goals that we have before us and the achievements that we've already had. Thank you very much, Mr. President.